Good evening and welcome to the October nineteenth meeting of meeting of the select board in Long Meadow, Massachusetts. I'll start out with reading a script. I'm the select board chair, Tom LaFusa, and I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange. Here. Steve Morantz.
Here.
Richard Foster?
Here.
And Mark Gold?
Here.
Okay, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Paul Pesterzic?
Here.
And Deb House?
Here.
Oh, okay, I got you set on vacation, alright. And we have some speakers on the agenda. I know Barry Jarvis is here, Barry? Okay, and later Mario Mazza will be joining us. I don't think it's your turn. This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty. Due to current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and due to outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with this agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom, as posted in the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For resident comment, after the announcements, COVID nineteen update and general announcement, I will afford public comment as follows. I would first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comment. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you and take care not to share your screen or your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the meeting materials are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along with the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If others, if members wish to engage in a quorum with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay. Thank you. I don't know how many more months we're gonna be having to read this immediately. I guess the next thing would be to do an update on COVID nineteen and our town manager, Lynn Simmons, will do that first.
Thank you, Tom. So as we stand tonight, we have three active community cases of COVID nineteen. I just want to make sure everyone, I'm sure you already probably are aware, but make sure you're aware that we're experiencing in the state, an uptick in cases and regionally around us, we're seeing that in many communities. So people just implore you to stay vigilant, wear your mask, social distance, and wash your hands. We are not immune to what's being experienced around us and there could likely be an increase in our cases in the next few weeks as well. So as of tonight, we have three active cases and I would just encourage everyone to continue to follow the safe guidelines that have been put out about masking and social distancing. That is what I have for a COVID update tonight. If anybody has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions from members of board? We haven't had any in a while, so, alright then, thank you very much, Lynn. The next would be announcements, and I know you have some, Lynn?
I do, yes, thank you. Quite a few, most of them pertain to the election that's coming up. The deadline to register to vote in the November third election is October twenty fourth, so that is Saturday. You can register to vote online and there are links on the town website. Vote by mail for the upcoming election. We are requesting that you have your application in by October twentieth, which is tomorrow. Ballots are being mailed out as soon as applications are received. As of the end of week last week, they had mailed out fifty-seven hundred ballots so far and I was informed late today that the vote by, I'm sorry, early voting that just kicked off on Saturday, that has been really well received. We've had over eight hundred people vote early so far. And that brings me to my next announcement, which is the early voting hours. Those started on Saturday. They continue every day this week until, actually, next Friday, October thirtieth. From eight to one is the last day to early vote and the full schedule is available on the town website, longmeadow.org. And just to remind people that the polling location has changed for Election Day. It will be at Greenwood Center, which is where it was held for state primary. So do not go to the community house, go to Greenwood Center to vote. We will be increasing signage leading up to that election day, so people are aware that it's at Greenwood Center. Polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM and we also have another reverse nine-one-one code red call to go out to remind residents as well. Next week, Tuesday, October twenty seventh, is town meeting. It starts at seven PM. It's going to be held at Long Meadow High School. A copy of the warrant is available on the town website at longmeadow.org/townmeeting, along with helpful information about attending the indoor town meeting, such as wearing a mask and social distancing. Thank you. That's all I had for announcements.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple announcements. One is that we are looking for a person to become a member of the Board of Health. One of the current members has resigned. They're moving out of town. And so we're looking for someone. If you'd be interested, or if you know someone who is interested in public health and has some experience, it'd be a great group of people to be part of. The other thing is that we had, you know, we started this process to figure out what's gonna happen with Halloween in town. I think it was the end of September where I first talked with Lynn and she had already done some groundwork on it. I spoke with the Board of Health about our concerns and then since then, I also called folks from like neighborhoods that had signed up for block parties in the past, talked with them, sort of got things moving, received a ton of emails, as did the rest of the board, about this issue. The Health Board did meet last week, Tuesday, and they voted to to cancel Halloween trick-or-treating this year. Now, we can't make an official announcement because there was a technicality in terms of the membership having a quorum that evening because of the resignation of one member and so they are going to have to meet again, but I don't think the results are gonna change at all. But so that's just one thing to be aware of. We were hoping people would not put out any trick-or-treats in the public gatherings. And as I mentioned in prior meetings, we have a list of suggestions about low-risk or low-impact Halloween activities so the children don't feel like they're neglected from the candy and so so that's that and basically that's it for announcements. I don't think there's any other announcements that we have to deal with, so let's move on to resident comments. And Lynn, do we have any folks who contacted you?
No, and I don't see anyone here for resident comments unless unless Rebecca had something to say, but I don't see anyone else.
Okay. Then the next thing would be select board comments. Do we have any select board comments? No? I don't hear anything? Okay, I don't have any. So we can move on to the town manager's report.
Hey, thank you. So I spoke about this in announcements regarding Fall Town Meeting. Next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, seven o'clock at Long Meadow High School. Beginning tomorrow, there'll be a new tool called Community Voice that's available leading up to the meeting to provide a mechanism for the public to ask questions on the warrant articles and get questions answered or make a comment on it and have public interactive dialogue. It's going to be available on the website, longmeadow.org/townmeeting. Each warrant article is listed there as an idea and you can click on each idea, which is the warrant article, and provide a, there's a place that they, where it's linked there to provide comment or engage in discussion. You do need to have an account created with the website, which anyone can do for free and it's right there on longmeadow.org and you can click in the top right corner, sign in, and it will prompt you to creating an account and anyone can create an account for the town website. Our library has reopened for in-person browsing by appointment only. Library appointments are available Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays and can be made online at longmeadowlibrary.org. And I, as I had previously told you, the Wolf Swamp Field renovation project was awarded to RAD Sports. The groundbreaking is expected no later than the week of October twenty-sixth and substantial completion is estimated for May twenty twenty-one. Obviously, that's weather permitting. And the town clerk's office, they've been busy mailing out ballots. Ballots can be mailed back to the office or deposited in the lockbox at the front right-hand side of the main entrance of Town Hall. And you're requested to request a mail-in ballot by tomorrow, by close of business tomorrow, so we have time to get it to you and you have time to get it back to us. And just to emphasize again, there are early voting hours and that whole schedule is published on the town website. That's all I had for what was prepared for this town manager report. We did want to briefly, Paul Pesterzic and I wanted to briefly talk about warrant article eleven and that is in the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
And again, the state numbers were updated by the governor. Just very quickly, I sent out a email about those last Friday. While they were not as generous as they were last January, they certainly still beat the amounts that we went at the annual town meeting with, as we had made some large reductions there. It puts us in a pretty good spot to meet the three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-dollar goal the select board wanted to be underneath the levy limit. The biggest wild card that remains at this point in time is the MGM money. It's about two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, which comes into play now with article eleven. Article eleven was using three-hundred-thousand dollars to balance the tax rate. If folks are comfortable that MGM will be paying us our allotted amount of money, then article eleven would not be required at the upcoming town meeting. However, if there is any doubt that the MGM money will not make it here, then article eleven would be required for us to balance the tax rate and still meet the three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-dollar goal.
Okay, well, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Lynn. Do we have any questions for members of the select board for the town manager's meeting and Paul's comments? Mark Gold? Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Tom, I do. So Paul, is there any downside to passing article eleven as a safety, you know, safety valve kind of thing?
No, there's no problem with it. I think the thing that may happen is that if all of a sudden we do get that money from MGM, I'm gonna have to put that in the tax rate and instead of being three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars underneath the levy limit, we'd be six-hundred, you know, about six-hundred-thousand dollars under.
You mean if we don't get the money from MGM?
Sorry, well, if we did get the money and we put the three-hundred thousand in, we would be six-hundred-thousand dollars underneath the tax levy limit.
Right, okay.
Great. Any questions, Mark Strange?
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back to the community voice that Lynn was talking about and just, that's great and I'm just wondering if there's any potential future kind of broader uses for that? Thinking about ways in which we can increase our communication channels between the town government and residents? I don't know if that technology had kind of broader applications other than, you know, kind of a line to comment on more and harder folks?
Yeah, certainly. There's a lot of different ways you can use it. This was kind of a soft trial to see if it's gonna work for us the way we hope it's going to. It was already built into the website, so there's no added cost to do it. It's just more of a familiarity and training piece now and then I also just wanna make sure that it's going to provide that public dialogue that we're hoping to get out of it.
Okay. Richard Foster, any questions?
Nothing tonight, Tom.
Okay, and Steve Morantz, any questions?
I think we should put article eleven on the warrant. I have no confidence that MGM is gonna pay us the money in any kind of timely fashion. They're not paying Springfield. They're negotiating with Springfield about their payment and Springfield's a bigger fish for them to fly than us, so I think it would make most sense in a safety if there's no downside to having this warrant on the town meeting, I think we should definitely do it.
Okay, thank you. And I have no comments. Nice reports, but that's, you know, as usual. Alright, the next thing is we look for approval of the minutes of, you know, October fifth. I need a motion for that. I did have one correction I wanted to make.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the October fifth select board meeting as corrected by Mr. LaFusa.
Okay, and we second?
Second.
Okay, so the only thing, I, correction is pretty simple, but under Old Business, Section Three, there's a quote in there about halfway down that says, "Mr. LaFusa believes that conflict is growth and that each interview we brought a unique strength and that should be that conflict leads to growth." It's really, it's not an original idea. It's a, it's a part of conflict theory, which is one of the major theories in sociology. Conflict leads to growth. So if you guys agree to that change, then any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, then why don't we take a vote? Deb, will you do a roll call?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve? Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, the next is to, I think, is to approve appointments to the Historic District Commission and the Energy Sustainability Committee. And we had some folks who interviewed with us recently. So I need a motion to put, place Robert Humerson in a in a vacancy for a term that would expire in six-twenty-three for the Historic District Commission.
I'll move we approve Robert Humerson for the Historic District Commission for a three-year term as an alternate expiring June twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, thank you, Richard. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor will take a roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and we have another appointment to the Energy and Sustainability Committee. David Morris, you got a motion on that?
I'll move we approve David Morris to the Energy and Sustainability Committee for a three-year term expiring June twenty twenty
Okay.
Two. Should that be twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, Deb?
Twenty-two.
Okay, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
The second by Stephen. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, Deb?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, welcome to community service for those who were elected, who approved. And the next thing would be to continue our discussion on Halloween. We, our last meeting, there was a motion to have the select board, you know, cancel any trick-or-treating that was made by Mark Gold. And, you know, in lieu of the Health Department or the Health Board's vote the other day, I guess we just ask if, Mark, if you want to remove that amendment or that motion?
I don't want to remove it. I'd rather take it off the table and have the select board vote on it. I thought the intent we put it on the table was to get the advice of the Board of Health and we've done that. We've now gotten their advice.
Okay, great. So we have a motion and it was seconded in the last meeting. It's now off the table. I don't know if we need to vote to have it off the table.
Nope, no, you don't.
Okay, because we said we're gonna open it. Okay, so then we have comments. I see Steve Morantz.
I, yeah, I have a specific motion because I'm still led to believe that we can recommend that there is no Halloween trick-or-treating. The only entity that actually say you can't have it is the Board of Health. So I totally think we should, you know, back up the Board of Health and say this should not happen, but I don't think it's actually in our authority to say we are banning Halloween. We are recommending that there is no Halloween. You know, it's parsing words, but I, you know, I think we should remain in our authority, let the Board of Health exercise their authority.
Okay, so, I don't know. Deb, do you have the motion that was on the table? Because we need to amend it.
Yes.
Can you read it, Chris?
Okay, hold on one minute.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Gold made the motion that the town of Long Meadow banned door-to-door trick-or-treating for Halloween of twenty twenty in response to COVID nineteen. Mr. Foster seconded the motion.
Okay. So alright, any other comments? I don't know if, Mark, if you'd be willing to make that into a milder motion to say that the town recommends that we, people don't participate in the Halloween activities or trick-or-treating?
Let's just vote. I'd rather vote on it the way it is and see where it goes. I mean, the fact is that we've decided that the Board of Health is the only authority that has enforcement to it, but that doesn't mean we can't also vote that there be no door-to-door trick-or-treating. So, you know, and I understand the distinction, but I think given the snafu with the Board of Health vote, I think the sooner we get something out there in public, the better off we are.
Okay. Comments from other members on the motions? Anyone else have anything else to add to the discussion? Okay, hearing done, I guess we will call for a vote. Deb, roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Alright, so there we go. Now, the next item is to continue the discussion on the Charter Review Committee recommendations and we've actually done quite a bit of work on that. And in meeting and discussing it, it looks like the only thing left on it that we would need to approve is the items that have to do with the superintendent. Because it looks like we've addressed all the other issues that and unless I, you know, unless I've been getting information, it's missing something. And so the thing with the superintendent, because the school biz, school board or school committee and the superintendent are so busy now with school, I think I'd probably try to address this in November and talk with them then. So does anyone, Mark, I know you keep tabs on this. Would you believe that we've approved all the recommendations?
Tom, I thought that there were a couple others that had to do with the role of the town manager that were in our more controversial bucket. You know, clearly I'm not prepared to go over them in any depth tonight, but if you want to, let me take a look closely on them because they were in that document that I had sent out before down near the bottom of the things that we hadn't done.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, that came up and we had discussed Lynn had found that we had approved that. That those, the town manager items were approved. I remember specifically going through them and it had to do with rehiring and redoing contracts or getting rid of them.
No, no, that one I remember, but it was the town manager No, no, I, that one I remember, I, but it was the town manager's role relative to some of the other organization, other committees.
Okay, so, um, if that is correct, then what we'll do is, as, uh, take a look at town managers' roles. All right, and then, um, committees. And then, and so we have that, and then we have this information, the section on the superintendent. And then I think we'll be all pretty much caught up. You know, we can double-check your records, Mark, too, and anyone else who thinks that we haven't, have missed anything, please get back to me.
I'm, I'm looking at it right, for it right now, I think I have it here.
Okay.
So, uh, doors, so we did the Capital Planning Committee. Oh, and we did the Building Committee, right?
Yes.
And we did the Finance Committee?
Yes.
So cha- then the, now the, the last one's Section 5, changes involving the responsibilities appointed in tenure of the town manager. You're saying those were all done?
Uh, I know we did with the tenure, all that, I know that was done.
Okay, and then there's the school superintendent issues, that, that'd be it. So if we've done the, all the su- the town manager ones, then I guess we're done. I, I didn't think we'd done them all.
But I, I, I still have a few that are not addressed, and are subsequent, um, Section 211A and B, and then Section 76A and C. One deals with the Capital Planning Committee, the other one deals with the Finance Committee and the Budgets.
And, and public hearing, Paul, that's 76 also.
Okay.
All right.
So it's the review of Section 76, Paul, uh, um, that we think is, you have to look at.
Again, you know, 211A and B, it's something, it deals with the, um, I don't know if it's the, uh, another part with the Capital Planning Committee.
Yeah, I think those were capital planning.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, because I, I know when we voted in the capital plan, it, it did seem like there was a little difference in what I saw and what we voted in. So we will, uh, prepare those, and we'll start to discuss them in our next meeting. And then, you know, try to get all this done before the end of the year. Now, they won't be able to go on a warrant article until, uh, Fall Town Meeting. Or this, no, the Annual Town Meeting, I mean, so, but, um, but we'll have our, that part done, so. Great, thank you, uh, Mark and Paul. So, the other thing is we go to New Business, and, uh, we have an Open Space Recreation Plan from 2020 to 2027, and we are looking to a vote, a vote to endorse it. It's 117 pages, and Barry is gonna talk to us about it, and, um, you know, I hope we don't have to read every page, but it was very thorough. I might send it to some of the folks in town to look at it, it was really a good job. So, uh, I don't know, Lynn, if you want to give an introduction to Barry, or if we should just have Barry step up?
Yeah, thank you. So yes, uh, Barry Jarvis is here tonight, uh, she really spearheaded the group effort here, uh, to provide this plan and bring it forward for the next seven-year phase. This work on this plan started before COVID and, um, had a little bit of a delay, but then picked back up, what was it, probably late spring sometime? And it was, uh, really led by the effort of Barry, along with the help of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and, uh, quite a few, uh, boarding committee members that took part and spent time looking through all the details of the plan. Uh, several virtual public hearings were held as well to gain feedback, and there was also an online survey that was done. So I'll let Barry, um, give you more of the specifics on the plan, and then we can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. So I would like to give you an overview, I am seeking on behalf of the plan, the support of the Select Board as well as the Planning Board. Those are the two boards that need to officially support the efforts. As Lynn said, the last plan, it's designed to be a seven-year plan, however, the last plan was initiated in 2011, uh, in 2010, actually, and it came out in 2011. This plan we initiated just over 12 months ago. So despite the COVID hiccups that we, we endured, it's actually almost on track. As Lynn mentioned, or actually as Dr. Lucusa mentioned, the plan is longer. It's technically, it, it is over 100 pages, but the, um, there's addendums in the back of the plan. It is 35 pages longer than the 2011 plan, um, 75 pages. Some of that has to do with the survey results, that I'll let you know. We, we use the same approach for public engagement, we did a public vision session and kicked off the, um, public engagement with a survey. Now, in 2011, we had 77 responses, which is less than 1% of our population. However, very pleased to say, with this plan, we had over 425 responses. I don't know if people were home with COVID and they had time to do the survey, but, um, big change in, in that. However, the opposite was true with the public vision. In 2011, we had over 30 people, and even though the, um, to the, the 2020 public vision session we had was via Zoom, we only had about 12 people, and most of us were, um, either representatives of the committee itself or from LCTV. We had very little, um, public engagement with that, so we were very grateful to the people that participated with that. Um, some, some obvious changes, the mapping is much more advanced than it was nine years ago. Um, it's more accurate, the technology is better. Um, an interesting point in the data that we collected primarily through the survey was that there are opposing viewpoints by residents about how we should use the meadows. So I'll leave that as a teaser, so you can go read the plan, and hopefully form your own opinion with that. Some of the themes were common, we had developed five goals in this plan, whereas we had four goals in the 2011 plan. And that is because we added a climate change goal in the newer plan. Which, not to say it wasn't on our radar, but it's certainly in the forefront now, um, as opposed to nine years ago. And, um, the themes, however, are generally the same in terms of, um, community outreach, education, and we focused a little bit more on funding sources for the initiatives with this plan as opposed to the 2011 plan.
Okay, um, any questions from board members? I guess, Mark, Mark Gold, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I do, I, I mean, I read, I read through a period, it's a really good document, and I appreciate all the work that I'm sure went into it, it's pretty obvious. The question I have, and I don't know if it's for you or Lynn or, or us, is down at the back, there's kind of a, okay, here's, here's the, the action plans. How are we gonna take those out of that book, get them to each of the responsible or, you know, impacting groups and committees, and get those on their plans of action for the next five years or seven years? Is there a plan then to take this to those committees from the, I don't know, Parks and Rec Committee or whoever it is? Or is this something that now falls to the Select Board and to the town manager to turn these into action items?
I, I think it depends on the action, there is responsible entities listed for each initiative. So i- if, if there's, there's some that are Conservation Commission, and I will say that with this plan, there is representation from the Conservation Commission, from the Energy and Sustainability Committee, the Park Board, um, the Planning Board, Arlene Miller was part of the group, so, um, of course Lynn was part of the group as well. So I don't know that there's one responsible, I think we're all responsible for this plan and making sure that the initiatives within the next five to seven years, as many as possible, don't get carried over, but they actually get accomplished.
Well, Barry, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, you know, argumentative here, but, you know, they say when everybody's responsible, nobody is. You know, so the issue is, who's really gonna say, send it to the Conservation Commission and send it to the Planning Board? Send, please look at your items, here's what we hope that you'll be able to achieve based on the, the acceptance of, you know, that kind of thing.
I'm not sure I have the exact answer for that. I mean, I would hope that if there's specific departments that are responsible, perhaps that would be at the Directive of the Department Head or the Town Manager, and if it's committees, perhaps the Select Board could assist with that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mark Strange, any questions?
No questions, good job, Barry.
Thank you, thank you for attending the vision session, by the way.
Okay, uh, Steve Morantz?
Yes, although I, I think it's a, a really phenomenal document, but the follow-up on Mark Gold's question, uh, there's something specific coming up, we have this, the skateboard park. So, you know, we're gonna spend us money to do some sort of study about skateboard. This is then gonna go places. Where does that fit, I mean, who's gonna be responsible within this document to say, well, we have a skateboard port, park, we have this open space plan, we have all these guidelines. Is that like, how that would actually happen in terms of this plan and something like the skateboard park, which is gonna show up on our radar in a year or so?
Sure, so, I think that, um, there are a lot of different projects that fit nicely within the framework of this project. With, with specificity to the skate park, I, I'm not quite sure that. I know with the survey results, if you read the comments, um, there were, but there's no goal that directly links a skate park. But this is one document, this isn't a long-range plan for the entire town. This, um, has, you know, more of an environmental sustainability parks. So I, I think there's overlap, but as far as the specific skate park, it's, it's part of public comment on the survey, but it doesn't fit neatly into this plan, really anywhere. Dog park, on the other hand, you might, you might see that it does.
Okay, um, and Richard Foster, any questions or comments?
I would, I would anticipate, I've, I've dealt with similar studies for most of my career. They usually end up being part of a performance package, uh, the milestones are put into a performance package and tracked as accomplishments each year. I don't know if the town manager is ready to comment on it or not, but that's normally how you ensure success. Like Mark said, these, these studies have a way of migrating to a shelf and collecting dust unless they are, are actively part of your yearly programming and planning efforts and also compliance to performance issues.
One thing I will say about the plan, and I'm sure Lynn has a comment for this as well, but this wasn't a plan that was developed by town employees. There were very few town employees that were part of this process. In fact, most of the planning was done by committee members, um, and board members that are town residents that have a very vested interest in the outcome of that. So I think as, as far as accountability, which I think that's what I'm hearing, there's, there's a lot of accountability with that, because it's not just town employees. It's, it's public engagement.
Yeah, it was very, um, you know, very good job, very thorough. You know, I, I noticed that he even talked about areas with protected habitats, um, quite a few years ago, um, I guess it's over 10 years now. Uh, my son had captured two, um, what are called worm snakes, uh, in, behind our house. And, and it's very rare, it's only, um, I think they only live in this area of Western Mass. And so it's, it's nice that it showed the protected thing, we did take pictures of it. I would like to take a minute to just identify the folks who did participate in this planning process. We have Christian Carnahan, Patrick Carnahan, Andrea Chason, Walter Gunn, Jamie Hench, Barry Jarvis, Tim Keen, Jeffrey McAllman, Arlene Miller, Margaret Reckus, and Lynn Simons. So, uh, we appreciate all your work, and, um, we also received a letter from Kimberly Robinson, the Executive Director of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, was part of our packet, and she strongly recommends that we, um, approve this, this plan. And so what we'd be looking for is a motion to accept this, um, Long Meadow Open Space Recreation Plan update for the years of 20 to 2027. Would someone make a motion?
Go move.
Okay, and seconded?
Seconded.
All right, um, any further discussion? Hearing done, Deb had asked for a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. So now we will move into, um, a suggestion, uh, of Select Board Policy on road service, uh, incursion repair. And this was brought to our attention by Mark Gold, and we have, uh, Mario Maza on deck with this also, because we have the current plan as part of our, uh, of the trench, trench permit application. So, um, I guess we could start with Mark, if you want to talk a little bit about this. Where you, you know, what led you to submit this idea?
Sure, really brief, I mean, uh, you drive around town, we actually implemented this requirement, this eight-foot minimum requirement, I, in several places, and one of them happens to be on Merryweather Drive, which isn't too far from my house. And every time you go by it, it's just great, whereas then, you know, there's another street next door to it, there's somebody cut a eight-inch wide trench, and the thing has sunk four or five inches, and, and every time you drive over that, you're bouncing it, and just seems to me that if we could do it once, we could do it every time, and it, you know, I, I just don't understand why with all the money we're putting into streets, we don't just require that the repair be big enough that it, it, it stands up and you don't have cars bouncing all over the place. So that was the initiative, I think.
All right, and Mario Maza, who's the head of our DPW, um, you had given us about the trench permits, and, um, you know, what is the difference between, uh, you know, those narrow trenches and this eight-foot one? In terms of, um...
I think it depends on what the repair is, if, you know, they're fixing a water main in the middle of the road, it's a little wider and sometimes deeper. Um, if it's just a service, it, it may not be as wide, so. I, I don't really know what Mark's talking about, uh, in, in that regard, but what I will say is that, the one comment I did have on, at least what I saw as a first draft, and I don't know if there was a second one, is Mark called for two years, uh, moratorium, and our trench permit has a five. For consistency purposes, I'd ask that we make that one change to Mark's, um, policy.
Okay.
I, I was unaware we had a five, I'm more than happy to have that.
Yeah, there's a five with the trench permit.
No, 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 but after we repave a road, nobody can even ask for a permit for its five years?
Well, they can ask, but there's different requirements. I can make them go curb to curb, and of course if there's a water main break or a gas leak or something like that, emergencies, you know, they cut the road, and, and then, again, they have different standards they have to live up to, it's not just the, the small patch that you're probably talking about, that you've driven over 100 times.
More than happy to make this five years.
So that's, that's my one comment on, on the policy itself.
Okay. Um, any questions from other members of the board?
Yeah, I have a question, Tom.
Yes, Richard.
Yeah, I noticed, uh, Mario, we don't seem to have any, uh, quality standards associated with the permitting process. Is, is that taken care of behind the scenes as far as the, the smoothness and the, the type of actual repairs that are gonna be made?
Yeah, that's part of the permit. It does call for, um, very specific, um, remedies. Like, for example, Commerce Street is diff- I'm sorry, not Commerce Street, Route 5 is different than most other roads because it has a foot of concrete under it, um, back when it had the railroad there, the train tracks. And so whenever you're gonna do work out there, we make you, you know, put that back, and then that's obviously a different standard on streets that don't have that, uh, concrete base. But yes, two of the, you know, binder, it, 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 um, the specs there and the trench permit.
Yeah, mo- most of the problems, I think you and I both agree, we see is compaction.
Yes.
Uh, with our sandy soils, it's very difficult to get them to compact down properly, to get a resurface on that holds, uh, its original shape. I also noticed that in, in several communities, I've read several articles on it, that people are starting to, uh, embed a chip or an identification. that people are starting to uh, embed a chip or an identifier on all these patches that lead back to who originally did the repairs. It stays part of that repair patch. Have you investigated that or have you read any articles on that?
I've not. That's interesting stuff. I've not even heard about that. But I will tell you that when they take the permit out, obviously it's a public document and if somebody were to call us, you know, we could do some research and figure out who cut the road when. So in a way we're doing that, but obviously not as tech savvy as what you're talking about.
Yeah, well, you, you know as well as I do, when you got a hundred and some mile road system, you can have two patches, you can have ten patches within a forty foot area. And sometimes ownership almost becomes impossible. And I guess that's why communities migrated towards embedding a chip or an identifier that said which utility was responsible for that. And it's only for the, the future maintenance, you can call them back and there's no questions on, on getting repairs. But I, I don't know if we've had any problems in our community with it or not, but it's uh, seems to be working in other communities rather well.
I, I appreciate that information. It's, I'll look into that.
Well, it sounds good. Um, Stephen Marantz, any questions or comments on this? No. Okay, and Mark Strange?
No questions.
Okay, uh, the only question I have is, when it comes to putting trenches across the road, are there ever times that residents have to pay for that or is it always utilities?
I can't think of an instance where a residence would have to pay for it now. If what you're really asking me is do they pay for it via their utility bill? I mean, I guess there's a way to say that they're paying for it, but I can't think of a situation where a resident came in and um, needed to cut into the road for anything.
Mario, if my water supply line from the street to my house failed and it needed to be replaced and they had to dig up a portion of the street, I'd pay for that.
Fair enough. Um, usually there's a curb stop though.
Oh, okay.
On your property.
Okay.
And anything, you know, uh, we would, we would pay for that, the curb stop. A version of what Mark's saying that's true that where they could have to pay.
And also the sewage systems.
Right.
If the sewage system goes across the, the street, a person might have to pay for a, a channel to be cut across the street?
Right.
I believe the way our, yeah, I believe the way our current policy reads is that the homeownership uh, goes to the main.
Right, they own the pipe to the main. That's true at Water Two. Um, so that, I guess that would be via a contractor doing the work.
All right. So I guess, cause I'm, the reason I'm going down that road is because is this kind of a policy gonna incur a, a greater expense? Uh, and how much of a greater expense would it be for homeowners who had to do this work? I mean, I, I, you know, compared to a utility, you know, they might feel the pinch quite a bit more. What would be the difference in price for having something that was eight feet wide versus two, two feet wide?
Uh, it'd be far more expensive and it, it's not just the eight foot. If you're cutting into a new road, I'm not letting you get away with just an eight foot patch. You're going curb to curb, um, probably more than eight feet. So the expense is gonna be far greater. I don't have a number for you, but um, you're right in that it's gonna be more expensive for the homeowner.
But Mario, that's required now, uh, on a new road.
That's true.
Okay, and so would it make any difference in an older road?
No.
So in an older road, they'd be allowed to have a narrower patch?
In, in a road five years or older, there's no moratorium. So you can cut it. For example, in one of the situations we just talked about, your water main needs to be replaced, um, you hired a contractor to do it. Uh, yeah, you might be able to get away with a, an eight inch patch uh, on a road like that.
Okay, um, so, and I, I lived by those eight inch patches. You know, there was some uh, new construction going up next to me and they cut across the road and my house uh, shook quite a bit for a while after that. So I um, you know, I think this sounds like a good plan. Is there any other comments or questions on this um, proposal?
Tom, only, only that generally our policy has been that the first time something appears, we just discuss it and, and get back to vote on it next meeting. I mean, I'm more than happy to vote on it, but if nobody opposes it. But generally, we kind of let it ruminate for two weeks.
Sounds like a good plan. Okay.
May, um, before we get off this topic, may I just have one second of time?
Yes, of course.
The one thing I guess I just wanted to say about it, I guess, different than what we've already talked about, is um, the tax levy limit. And I get a little concerned when the capital funding is X dollars at the end of the year. And if we're gonna put four hundred thousand of that as a guarantee into capital planning, I'm a little concerned I might be short, shortchanged on other projects, i.e. school roofs or boilers or something else. Um, so although I'm happy to hear that we're investing in our roads, we need it. You guys all drive to town, you know what, what it's like. Um, I'm concerned if that, it's usually about two million dollars in capital planning, uh, money every year. If that is reduced because of levy issues and now I only have a million and four hundred thousand of it is for paving, um, I'm just a little concerned about our other assets.
So Mario, this policy doesn't require us to spend four hundred thousand dollars. It says, it says because we've been spending four hundred thousand dollars, because we've been spending that much money and investing in our roads, we think that we don't want, you know, my, my intent was, we don't want contractors giving us a, 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 you know, a, a substandard patch. But it, there nowhere is this policy say, we'll, we will invest this kind of money. The only requirement is that will, is to require the, you know, it, it, it just says, therefore the town has adopted a policy requiring road surface incursion to be repaired in such a manner that the repaved portion of the road is no less than eight feet in the smallest dimension. That's all it says.
Well, that's the last one. The first one was the one that got me. Whereas the town of Long Meadow commits over four hundred thousand per year to capital funds to roadway improvements.
So it should say has committed.
Is that an old, uh, do I have an old draft here? Is that?
No, 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 that's what it says, but I mean, we can change that to has committed.
Okay, uh, I just, if we're gonna think about this for a couple of weeks, I just, those were my two cents on this thing is that I just, I get a little concerned. I mean, we have needs all over the town. Roads are certainly one of them, schools are another, um, our, our buildings, obviously. So I just, I just wanted to state that.
Okay, good. Any other comments on Mario's comments about the funding for roads or capital planning? Okay, well, so um, Deb House, if you could just make sure that we come back to this, we'll put this in our November meeting. Um, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so our next um, item, we, we've all received a, an email regards to an open letter to James Judge, who is the CEO of Eversource Energy. Uh, as we know, energy uh, is changing from Columbia to Eversource, uh, Eversource. And so the select board members were asked to sign this, but um, I think we really needed to, to revisit this. I know we signed several letters uh, about uh, regarding the pipeline and expanding it in, in our town. And um, so Michelle Marantz, um, who brought this letter to our attention, she's here this evening. And if, Michelle, if you could just talk a little bit about the letter and why you'd like us to sign it. Well, you're still muted. We have to start over.
Have to unmute, yeah. How many times do you tell people to unmute? I was all set, but obviously I thought I was all set. Okay, um, I'm chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group and I'm here tonight uh, to talk about this letter. I'd like to thank the select board for giving us the opportunity to present information to you regarding the request that uh, we're making to the select board to provide a group signature, group approval to the letter that um, we've sent uh, to, we are about to send to Eversource. As you know, from reading the letter, it welcomes Eversource as the new owner of a company previously owned by Columbia Gas. Beyond that welcome, the letter reminds Eversource of the reason that prompted the sale. That is, the danger that gas infrastructure poses to our community's health, safety, and future. We describe the financial cost of unwarranted gas pipeline expansion, an issue that Attorney General Healy has formally written about, as this expense is inevitably passed on to ratepayers. We also mentioned the State Global Warming Solutions Act that mandates specific reductions of fossil fuel emu- emissions and how that mandate is at odds with pipeline expansion. In addition to these concerns, the letter notes that over the past two years, Northampton, West Springfield, and Holyoke have successfully rejected pipeline expansion in their cities, thereby negating the need to construct pipelines in Long Meadow, Agawam, and Springfield to carry this gas supply north. We urge Eversource to meet with us in this letter to discuss this reality as well as other specifics regarding the Long Meadow Supply Project. On a positive note, we cite Eversource's electricity subsidy subsidiary and call on the company to reduce gas distribution services and to actively pursue non-combustible clean energy options like geothermal district heating and electric pump technology. This would be a win-win energy strategy for both Eversource and Long Meadow, as ratepayers and workers would be able to benefit from the transition to the clean energy future that Eversource has identified as a corporate priority. Before ending the summary of the letter, I'd also like to mention important changes that have occurred since the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group first launched its pipeline opposition. In the past two and a half years, we've seen climate change move from a consideration in the distant future to a current disastrous reality that is sparing no section of our country. From drought and fires to excessive winds and rains, climate change has destroyed communities and the end is not in sight. In the past two and a half years, seventy percent of the American public have expressed their desire for our country to embrace renewable energy now. And those people have voted for and intend to vote for candidates who support that initiative. In two and a half years, there have been an increasing number of scientific studies linking particulate air pollution to a range of health problems, including, but not limited to miscarriages, diabetes, obesity, Alzheimer's, premature births, and a slew of different respiratory diseases. During the pandemic, we've recently become aware of how populations who have been continuously exposed to air pollution are three times as likely to experience COVID fatalities than those whose populations are not exposed. In two and a half years, we've seen the cost of renewable energy become cheaper every day so that conversion to renewable energy is no longer a matter of cost or inadequate technology, but one of political will. And this is where the Long Meadow Select Board comes in. Our Pipeline Awareness Group and our area-wide uh, coalition need your help in telling Eversource that we want them to pursue the policy that they have publicly conveyed in their document entitled, quote, "Commitment to Clean Energy and Carbon Neutrality by 2030," unquote. Please join eighty statewide groups, state legislators, and other elected officials in signing as a group this letter urging Eversource to transition to a clean energy future that will mean better health and safety for all concerned.
All right, thank you, Michelle. That was a very good summary of what's, what's going on in this issue.
It's hard for me to keep it short, but I just.
We tried, but it was good. I, I knew you'd come around to the fact that Eversource is a electricity company.
Well, it, you know, it has two components to it and it's a little confusing for people. I mean, this is something that I've learned. I knew about the electricity part of it, but you know, they also have this gas subsidiary. And so it's kind of an opportunity for us and for them to work together because they'll still make money if they transition to electrifying everything.
All right, so uh, do we have questions from members of the select board or comments? Uh, uh, Mark Strange, any?
Uh, yeah, just, just a couple of things. Thank you so much, Michelle, for presenting uh, this to the board. And um, you know, to me, this is, you know, thi- this is about climate change and climate change, um, I would hope is no longer um, controversial bipartisan issue. Um, you know, every year it seems like in town we have these horrible terms.
Right, right.
Um, we have, you know, we have fires in California, um, or the fires in Australia. Things are happening.
Right.
Uh, and things that are costly and things that are negatively impacting people's lives. And uh, so, so the only way to get to where we need to be and, uh, and, and things are pressing is for these utility companies to start changing the ratio of their capital improvements, um, professional natural gas to renewable energy. Um, and I think this, this has to um, be a start of our relationship with Eversource now with the, in the gas, gas business. You have to let them know how we feel about um, uh, the whole pie.
Thank you. I think you've hit the nail on the head. I mean, even Long Meadow, you know, we talk about it, when, when you hear that it's going to be a windstorm, there are a lot of people in this town get, that get scared because of trees coming down and houses being destroyed by trees coming down, so. You know, uh, the bumper sticker says, "Mother Nature, that, that's last." You know, it's uh, we're not gonna get away with what we continue to, have been continuing to do. And you know, setting aside the whole issue of climate change, there is this very well documented issue of particulate pollution, which is doing tremendous damage to our health across the nation. Uh, and in two and a half years, I have seen, I read the health section of the New York Times every week and almost every week, there's a report from some scientific agency about what air particulate pollution, what, what uh, negative impact it has on people's health.
Mark Gold, did you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I, Michelle, thanks for putting this together. I just, my question is that, you know, I, I kind of see Long Meadow in a unique position because one of the pipelines is in our town, there's a substation going up in our town. You know, is adding our names to what I'll call a, you know, a form letter that's going out from a whole bunch of different organizations to dilute our impact on Eversource compared to sending our own letter from the town of Long Meadow that says, you know, keep your pipeline out of our, out of, out of our town and have a lot more impact. I mean, I'm, I just read this and said, you know, I've been on the other side of these letters when I worked for a big chemical company. And you know, you see one and you, you don't look at any of the other ones. And you don't care who they're signed by because they're all the same. And it, it, you know, I think we need to differentiate ourselves somehow from Eversource. And as, as much as I appreciate this, you know, somehow I think the town of Long Meadow needs to do something different and, and not just be part of the, the overall crowd. And I'd be interested to hear your, your comments on why adding our name to a long, long list of a form letter, and that's what it is, is gonna be impactful.
Well, I don't think it's an either or situation. I think that you can do both. And the thing that's important about Long Meadow as the community um, endorsing the sentiments that are in the letter, um, I, we know from previous discussions with uh, legislators that it's super important for the town that's being impact, impacted to make a public statement. I don't think signing this letter in any way would dilute your effort. In fact, you know, I, you know, we can have another talk about where Long Meadow uh, might wanna proceed in all of this because um, uh, Eversource has made contradictory statements about the Long Meadow project. You may know this already, William Ackley, who's the president of the gas uh, division, has said uh, in front of the DPU that um, this is a necessity. This project is a necessity for Eversource. And yet, he's also said publicly that he wants to speak uh, with, he wants to uh, subject this uh, project. uh, subject this, uh, project to a very serious review because he realizes that residents and environmental groups have issues with this. So, you know, our question in reading both of those quotations is, which is it? But it sounds to me he was saying one thing to the DPU to to motivate the sale, but it does also sound as if he is willing to talk with, um, not only our en- environmental group, our community groups, but definitely with the leaders of the town. And as I said, I don't think your signing this, um, diminishes the impact of anything that you do because you have an attorney also that's working on behalf of the town.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, Richard Foster?
Yeah, I had an administrative question. Uh, Lynn, has this been reviewed by our lawyer?
Uh, no, not not to my knowledge. No, he hasn't been given a copy of this to review.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I do want to say that, um, as we have over eighty groups that that have signed this and I know that, um, Mark, you've been somewhat dismissive of that, but it's hard to dismiss the Sierra Club. It's also hard to dismiss, uh, physicians for social responsibility. I mean, those are very weighty organizations that have jumped on board and.
I I haven't been dismissive of of the groups at all.
Well, you're saying, you're saying that that they would be dismissive, but I I'm not so sure. Also, when we have Senator Lesser signing off on it and Representative Ash, Senator Comerford, Representative Sabodosa, we have three, uh, city councillors in Springfield that have signed off, and we're anticipating that more will. We've extended the deadline to make that happen. It just, I don't know. I think it represents an enthusiastic endorsement of a good idea.
I'm not arguing it doesn't, Michelle. My gar- my question is, if we have potential legal actions against Eversource for this, does this somehow impact our activity, our legal, you know, ability to to do something down the road, or will it somehow impact that legal ability? And, you know, Richard said we have an attorney look at it. I think that may be impo- I mean, that's the difference between us and some of those other groups. They're not potentially having legal impact or legal action against Eversource for what they're doing. Now, that was my only point to begin with, so, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think it, you have to do what you deem prudent.
Okay. And, uh, Steve Morantz, any comments, questions?
Uh, yes, I I do not think our signing this letter and our doing another letter, another action are mutually exclusive, I think. It is very important that the town of Long Meadow and its elected officials make a statement. I cannot see in any way, shape, or form how a sign this letter would have any legal implications for whatever happens with us and Eversource and Tennessee Gas and who knows what else comes down the line. Um, but I also think that if this is something that, um, requires further communication on a, on a, a board level, as it's, it's certainly not mutually exclusive. We can sign this letter and we can make up our own letter if we want to, which I think is not a bad idea. But I think joining the groups that have joined us, including both our our state senator and our state representative, and the other seventy-eight folks and organizations, I, I support a bit of that, and I do not think one includes the other.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, you know, when I first looked this over, it it seems like a very good re- good letter. Uh, I was happy with that. And I didn't see it as really anything that's it would contradict what we voted on in the past. You know, we've, we've voted on several letters that have been co-signed by legislators and, um, so I have no problem, uh, seeing us sign this letter. And if we feel that an additional letter would be warranted, um, you know, again, we would, I would think that at that point, we would look at our, check with our legal advisors to make sure that that letter says exactly what it should say, um, you know, for to get the most mileage out of it. Uh, so at this point, you know, we have this letter. I know there is a timeline on doing this. So I guess I would see if there's a motion to have us sign this. Now, I don't know if we would sign it probably as individuals or if we would sign it as a, um, I can, you know, this, you know, the whole committee sign. I'm not sure, uh, what the best signing thing is, um.
Um, we just established that we have a policy of looking at things in one meeting and ruminating on them for two weeks and then signing them the next. And given the, the, just the two quick questions about having our town attorney just say, yeah, go ahead and do it, you know, I, I, I'd suggest we do that. I mean, I, I'm not saying I'm not going to sign it or not vote for it. I just like to make sure our attorney does say, you sign this, you just dug yourself a big hole. A and B, you know, it's the first time we've seen it. We say we, we've long established this policy. You don't vote on things the first time we see them.
Well, I, I, I think that originally this was introduced and it was due on the fifteenth of October. And so I spoke with Michelle Morantz, and she said that they would extend that. And so I don't know how long they would extend it, but I also was going to ask, Michelle, um, how, what would be the best way for us to sign it? Would, should we?
I mean, I, I think you can all sign as individuals. I mean, that, what I think has an impact is if it's signed as the Select Board of Long Meadow.
Okay, so in order to do that, then it would be the chair would sign it? Is that what you're thinking?
Um, how did you sign your letter of opposition to citing the metering station, um, at, uh, on Long Meadow Country Club property?
I believe.
You signed it as a select board of Long Meadow, right?
I think each of us signed it, or I'm trying to think. Who was, uh, Marie was chair at that point.
Right, mhm.
Um, so I don't know. Lynn, do you remember if Marie just signed that as representative of the Select Board?
Uh, I do not know. I think that predates me. I think it predates you too, Lynn.
Okay, um. Deb House, I don't know. I wonder, you're probably thinking right now, how did she sign that?
Yeah, I'd have to look it up. I, I don't know if he and him.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, so I guess that's the other part of it is, is if we signed it as a group, just exactly how we would do that, if we'd each sign it, um, individually, um, or if we would do it, you know, as a group. So are any other comments from the board? We've heard from Mark, um, Gold. Anyone else have a view of how we should approach this?
I think we should all sign it.
Okay. That would make sense to me.
I think it would be, uh, more effective. I, we could all sign it as members of the Select Board of Long Meadow, I think. I will make a motion if the Long Meadow Board of Select People move to, uh, endorse this letter. If the, if that, if the Board of Select folks do that, then you as chair, uh, can sign this on behalf of the vote of the Board of, uh, uh, Select Board of, uh, the Long Meadow. I, I think if the board votes to exit, to endorse this letter, then that would do it. You, you sign on behalf of the board. I think that makes the most sense. Because then it's the board's vote, uh, us as individuals who are members of Select Board. I think, uh, Michelle's point of having elected bodies take a stand on this is really significant for the people who are actually receiving, um, the communication. And since this communication doesn't threaten legal action, it's a very, it's a very, it's a, it's pretty benign documents saying, you know, we, we want you to investigate these, uh, actions. And, uh, I, I think it's, I think, I think, you know, I will move that Long Meadow Select Board, that, you know, endorse this letter as the Select Board.
Okay, so that's a motion you're making right now, if I understand you?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a second on that?
I can.
Okay, so I would open for discussion. Um, and does anyone else have a, is a compelling reason that we would, you know, Mark was saying that perhaps we should wait a week or two weeks. Um, and are, do we have a compelling reason of why we would want to pass this this evening?
Michelle, in terms of waiting two weeks as far as, uh, where this letter goes, the impact does make a difference. Should we come back and vote in two weeks? Is that?
Well, I mean, we will accept, uh, certainly we would welcome a, uh, signature two weeks down the road. I, I would, uh, I mean, we are, we are going to move forward on Friday. We are going to be mailing the letter to James Judge and also to William Athley. And, um, so the signature from Long Meadow may not be there by, by that time or perhaps it will. I mean, is it possible to make him, I mean, I'm not on the board, but could you, is it possible for the attorney to move fairly quickly in saying whether or not this, this would be, um, has any inherent, uh, danger to signing, make a judgment call on it and, um, I mean, could you make a motion, uh, subject to the recommendation of the attorney? That it would pass subject to the recommendation of the attorney, something like that? I mean, I'm guessing it wouldn't take the attorney two weeks to deci- to decide this. It's, it is fairly benign. We're not confrontational. We're inviting the company to work together with us, uh, to pursue a stated corporate goal.
Yeah, so I guess that question could go, go to Lynn. Um, you know, we've had a pretty good working relationship with the attorney who was pursuing, um, our, our interests in terms of the, the purchase. Do you think that they would be able to get back to us in a day or two or?
Yeah, I, I don't know what his schedule is, but I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to get some sort of response back this week.
Okay.
So I would amend my motion to say that the Long Meadow Select Board, uh, approve, uh, sign, sign this letter uh, subject to, uh, the approval of town attorney.
Okay, and then do we have a second on the, uh, uh, motion to, to?
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, any further discussion? Okay, and I think that given the fact that if we don't get it, you know, to our, our community group, the Pipeline Committee by Friday, that it wouldn't really be of value in terms of, um, of the.
Uh, I mean, the sooner the better, but, um, well, we can send a P S if it's, if it's next Monday, but we are going to mail the letter, um, on Friday, so.
Okay.
Well, Lynn, he's up. This is Monday, correct? So we would hope we'd hear from the town attorney by the end of Thursday. That, that's not unreasonable, is it?
Right.
All right, so we have a motion on the table or an amended motion on the table. And, um, so have we had further discussion on this? All right, hearing done. Uh, I guess I would call for vote on this, um, motion. The main, I guess we vote on the amendment first, and that would be to have, um, the, any, any decision we make tonight that would would not move forward until we heard back from our attorney. Um, so that's basically the amended motion. Um, so Deb, if you could take a roll call vote?
Tom? Hold on one. Tom, can I get clarification on what you just said?
Yeah, that isn't the, as I, I didn't hear that as a motion. I think that the motion was something different.
The, the amended motion is, uh, the Board of, uh, the Select Board of Long Meadow, uh, 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 endorses this letter, sign it as a Select Board, uh, su- subject to, uh, approval by town attorney.
Right.
Okay, so approving this, if we vote on yes on this, would, would move us forward to have this signed before the end of the week?
If the town attorney says this is okay, it's, it's, yes.
And Richard, does that answer your question?
Yes, that clarifies. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'm glad you checked it out. Uh, so then we are, we can roll call vote on this?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
This is the amendment I'm voting on, not the full motion, correct? Yes.
Right. I'm sorry, did you say yes?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and now we go to the, uh, motion. If you could repeat it, Steve, or if Deb?
Motion is for the Select Board of Long Meadow to, uh, uh, sign as a Select Board, uh, to, uh, to, with all the other signatures of the, of this letter.
To endorse the letter.
Yes, to endorse the letter.
The open letter to James Judge?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Morantz or of Tom or of Lynn? What, what constitutes the, either an approval, I guess approval is sure, go ahead and sign it, what constitutes a, well, maybe, or no, you should, what level of legal concern constitutes that we, we won't sign it?
I would assume the legal concern would be the town attorney says you could be putting yourselves at some sort of future legal suit with whoever by signing, uh, by endorsing this letter that the other endorsements have to come by. If our town attorney says, I think this could have jeopardized the town, then I, then what the amendment said is, we're not going to do it. That's how I view it. That's how I view it.
So this, so the level of, the level of concern is that it could by the town, not that it will, but that it could jeopardize our standing with a lawsuit or other interactions with Eversource.
If the town, if the town attorney. If the town attorney says he thinks it could, then, then, then we, you want to sign as an individual, fine. But the town attorney says, I don't see any problem with the Board of Select endorsing this, then it's a done deal. I think that's what we.
Okay, that sounds good, okay to me. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, um, you know, the, the main emo- the original motion, um, is, is all ready to go. Deb, can you do a roll call for?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
So, is, what exactly are we voting on right now?
The, the ma- the original motion that Steve Morantz made was that we sign the letter, um, and that's what we're voting.
Then wasn't that, wasn't that, um, enveloped in the, the amendment? Or by the amendment?
It was enveloped, but, um, it's still a motion on the table and we should vote on it.
So if, if, if we vote yes, um, does that have any impact on our vote for the amendment?
Uh, it would just support, I believe it would just support the amend, the amended version also, yes.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, well, great. So we'll, um, hopefully get news back. Lynn, you, you know your, do your duty on this and, uh, appreciate you following up on that, and then I can come by and sign the later, the letter later this week.
Thank you for your time. The, the moral of the story is after seven months of dormancy while we waited for the sale to be finalized, um, well, that seven months of dormancy has passed now and things, not to use a pun, but things are going to start to heat up in terms of, um, you know, trying to settle this issue, not only in this town, but in Springfield and also in Agawam. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. You know, it isn't like this has gone smoothly for the Select Board either. Trying to get information and we have gotten very little.
That's what they do. They, they're not.
So, all right, well, thank you for coming tonight. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Housing Authority request for an appointment. And, and they, uh, we got this letter from the Housing Authority and they have, uh, two different actions. And the first one is really that they want us, they need to appoint another member because although it's an elected position, they're short one member and they're asking us to be able to uh, appoint someone from now until the next election, which would be next May. Um, so I guess we would just ask the board if this is okay. Should we, can we advertise this? Um, and then we will go through a process of selecting candidates from those to apply. Um, so I guess we probably could just get a consensus. Is this, anyone have any concerns about us advertising for somebody to take this? us advertising for somebody to take this, and then we could appoint it, the person? Okay, hearing none. So then, Deb, or Lynn, why don't you start the process? Or put an advertisement out for someone from the board? The second thing is the governor has an appointed position on the board. And so they're requesting the Select Board to contact Governor Baker's office and the Appointment Office, probably, to nominate Donna Burrell of 418 Long Meadow Street to be an appointee. She has experience with the issues, and she previously been a member of the Long Meadow Housing Authority, and is willing to take this appointment. But it comes from the governor's office. It's not really our appointment. So I guess I would look for a motion that we write a letter to asking the governor to appoint this individual. I think that might be the best way to approach it, unless someone else has a suggestion.
And is that a question?
Well, it is a question. I mean, I think that might be the easiest way.
My question is, does Governor always appoint a member of the Long Meadow Housing?
It sounds like it, yeah.
Okay.
So, if, so I think that might be the quickest thing. Would someone be willing to make a motion that the Select Board member, or the Select Board sends a letter to the governor asking to appoint this individual?
I moved.
All right, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, Tom, I have one question.
Sure.
Lynn, I didn't check the policy today. Are we authorized to appoint someone to this position?
Yes, my understanding, because the term was not fulfilled at the election, that the board appoints someone until the next election.
Okay, thank you.
Richard, in fact, we did it when the client didn't run once before. We appointed him.
Okay, all right. So, great. So we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, let's call for a vote. Deb, will you do the roll call?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right. Well, I hate to disappoint you, but we're at the end of the, the end of the agenda. It's only eight thirty, which is a nice change, but I think we deserve a break. Hopefully, we can, you know, start to eat some of our Halloween candy. No. But this is a great meeting. Thank you, everyone. And our next meeting will be in a couple of weeks. The first Tuesday of November. We have a town meeting Tuesday, don't forget that. And then the next meeting is November second at seven. Thank you very much, and good evening to everybody.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we need a motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So move, seconded?
I can.
Okay, roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
He left the meeting.
Oh, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, now we're done. Thank you, and good evening.